At this time, I'd like to call the meeting to order pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 20, hereby informing all attendees that a video and audio recording is being made of the meeting. Beth, please note, in attendance, we have myself, Dave Forrest, Matt Carlino, Peter Bloom, Meg Byron, Janet Warner, Pat Carlino, Kathy Hall, and Louisa V. Could you please identify your full name, please?
Louisa Volpi, V-O-L-P-I.
Okay, thank you, Louisa Volpi. First up, we have a Form A.
Did everybody get the picture of that?
Yes.
Okay, can I?
There we go.
Okay. I just noticed a Scribner error. And if you approve it, I will have the plan down there tomorrow, signed and stamped with the correct number. That was incorrect. Just so you know.
What is incorrect on this?
Then, on the top line on Main Street,
Yep.
That distance should be 110.49 feet.
So, what's going on here? Is it they're merging two lots? Is that right?
That's what she would like to do, yes.
And one building's coming down, correct?
Yes. I mean, she needs to get all the ducts in the road to make sure it comes down the way, you know, like going through the building permit and stuff like that, and she knows that.
Do we know, not that it's an official inquiry, but do we know what's the future of the lot is gonna be? Is it gonna be an empty lot anywhere where the building is going down?
I think she wants gardens. That's what I think she wants to have gardens and stuff.
This is the original Pam Loring building, right? Where the gift shop was?
No.
This is where am I here?
That I do not know.
Mr. Chair, this was the building in between Pam Loring's, 145, is a duplex. It's in the middle of Pam Loring's, which is the owner's sister-in-law. And in between the Leebroest block, it was actually my parents' duplex, 145 Main Street. Right across from St. Mary's Church.
Yep, okay.
I don't see any reason to object to this.
No, I don't.
No.
What's the verb that we need to use, Buck?
Endorse. Motion to endorse.
Motion to endorse, yep.
Well, did you move, Matt, or I'll move if you didn't?
You can, whatever you want.
Okay, I'll move to endorse it.
Whoever's got background noise, please be careful. Not sure where it's coming from. So we have Peter motioned and...
That's Peg, you gotta mute or stop moving or whatever, because it's coming from yours.
Okay.
There we go. Okay, so we have a motion from Peter, second by Matt. Any discussion? Hearing no further discussion, I'd like to take a vote. First, Matt Carlino.
Aye.
Dave Forrest.
Aye.
Peter Bloom.
Aye.
Peg Byron.
Aye.
Buck Donovan, aye. Form A is endorsed, so endorsed, and you're gonna make that that clerical change?
Yes, and I will bring everything tomorrow, so you will have it if you go into the town hall to sign it. Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, have a good evening, thank you.
Where's it gonna be, Beth? Is it gonna be up in your office or down in front?
I have it in my office.
Okay.
All right, thank you, have a good evening.
Thank you. Next up, we have approval of minutes. Those were in our packet, starting with January 24th.
Did everybody get my email about the ones on the website, too?
I did.
Okay.
I understand that you're working on trying to improve the website so that things that get posted stay posted?
Yep.
Okay.
Okay. Figure out what was happening? No?
One can only assume.
All right. Well, we found a solution?
So far, so good.
Okay, good, good. Okay. January 24th, meetings, minutes. This was one of the Airskin Drive?
I'll make a motion that we approve the January 24th, 2022 minutes for the lead planning board.
As written?
As written.
Thank you.
No amendments.
A second.
Second by Matt Carlino. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. I'll look for a roll call vote. Matt?
Aye.
Dave?
Aye.
Peg?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Buck Donovan, aye. Okay. Believe that's all we have for minutes, right? That's all I have in my packet. Is that correct?
Yeah, I'm working on two more steps. I did get my noise-canceling headphones today, so you should, we'll have them all in by the end of the week.
You know, Beth, I was reading that, and I really appreciate, or I can understand and appreciate what you're saying, I have similar struggles in my office, too. So, sometimes I have to shut the door, which is pretty rude, but you just have to. And you don't have that opportunity with your layout, so.
No.
We did not, we sent out the letters to Jeremiah and the ACLU with our Freedom of Speech signed bylaws. And I don't think we have heard anything back from them yet. Is that correct?
Not yet.
Uh, in that, that being said, do we, Peter, or anyone, do we want to move along in the rest of that bylaw? Or how much do we want to get into it? I know we want to touch on the gas station stuff. Is that correct, everyone?
I would, but I thought everybody else wanted to just look at the signs only.
Well, I was thinking, get that solidified. And concentrate on that and work on it, but not do any public hearing or anything yet. Play around with it for a little while. And...
So, Buck, what I would suggest is, if we think that the sign bylaw could possibly come up at town meeting this year, maybe we should just work on that for a while, and then as we get past town meeting, or possibly right before town meeting, we can begin to focus on other things. I think there probably are some other things that people want to do that, you know, we could do with the gas station stuff and the lighting stuff if people want to do it. There's one thing I've been thinking about off and on over the years is that we seem to want to have everybody in the downtown area who puts in a dumpster, put a fence around it.
Yeah.
And we've been enforcing that rule on people more or less uniformly for all time I've been on the board. I think it's probably time to put it in the bylaw if we're gonna actually enforce it uniformly.
Agreed.
I think it is, isn't it? It's in our site.
It is?
Yeah, it's in our site plan, is one of the, I believe it's in our site plan and special permit bylaw that we worked on, that we actually stated about the dumpster.
Okay, the new one, Matt?
I thought so, but I could be wrong. I remember discussion, and I'd have to go look for it, to be perfectly honest, but to confirm that. But I just, when you mentioned it, that's the first thing I thought of, that we already had that.
Well, I could be dead wrong, could be we already took care of it, but I was, my more general point, Buck, is that I'm thinking that there might be things that people want to do that are about equal priority with gas stations and lighting. We could hold next year, maybe.
Okay. So, what are we gonna do? Take a breather for a few weeks here?
Isn't the political sign bylaw pretty much done?
I do think we're wrapped up with that. We were just looking for like an approval from town council on it.
Yeah, I think we sure should. I've heard rumblings that we really, to counter our bylaw that we shouldn't even bother trying to regulate the signs at all. But I'm fine proposing what we've proposed. We're trying to do the right thing, but it'd be good to get a final input from our town council on that.
Do we think we should try to schedule a, did we schedule a public hearing, or?
I think we were just waiting, I think we were just waiting, because we're gonna have to soon for the May meeting, so.
I think we should, I think we should go ahead and at least schedule that.
Yeah, we better.
And you know, maybe that'll get town council to...
Yeah, because that one we need to get done.
Yeah. Well, what are they, what are you hearing, Matt, that they don't want any regulation?
Well, I've just heard rumblings, and I, and I, and I, that I haven't done the research, so I'd be speaking kind of sort of out of turn, but that there may be some case law that pretty much any regulation of freedom of speech could be an issue. So, I think we talked about five feet off the curb side, you know, and all of that.
Yeah, we gave up on that, I think, right?
Yeah, we should fix that, we should fix that before we go to public hearing.
Yeah.
Okay. Peg's got her hand up, but before I talk, I want to...
I'm sorry, I'm on a different view here.
I was, well, first of all, I'm wondering, should I put my hand up at these meetings?
Yes, I'm sorry, I was on a different view, Peg. I didn't, I didn't see it. I see it now.
Okay, because it goes on quite a bit, and I was just wondering, are we allowed to speak and go back and forth with one another, or should we go with the that we put our, that we put our hand up?
Go ahead, Peg.
Well, I'd like, I really would like an answer to that as a point of order.
Well, what you just witnessed, we kind of had a one-on-one going back and forth. When there's a group discussion, yes, the hand works, and I was in speaker view. So, I apologize, I'm in gallery now, so I can see everyone's. And and, yes, if you have a statement, the hand definitely, please.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair. In regard to the freedom of speech laws, I think we better get going as soon as possible, and if there are problems, we can correct it before the town meeting. There is case law probably on both sides, and I did think Peter was quite creative when he put this forth. And I would like to hear from our own town attorney, because he's going to have to either enforce it, enforce it, or if someone challenges that, he's the person that will be going to court to with it. So I think we need to get going on this as soon as possible, and schedule the hearings. Thank you.
Okay. Gordon?
Yes, sir, thank you, yeah. I was just gonna say, I was on the town website, and you already have a public hearing notice posted on the website for March 28th, Monday, March 28th, specifically to discuss the political signs.
Right.
So, I guess I'm a little, I don't know what you're talking about as far as getting going. You already gotten going.
We are going.
Yeah, just so you know, it's already posted. I don't know if it's in the paper, hopefully it is, because it's posted on the town website, or they're gonna have to change that. Thank you.
Beth, has it been in the paper?
Okay, so, I mean, I guess now I'm realizing the importance of minutes, but I have in my minutes at our last meeting that you voted for a public hearing on the 28th, so I knew I had to get it posted, so it is posted in the paper. But I can also, you know, post it for a different date and just continue it.
No, I wasn't, I guess we all, you know, we retired that night, and we've forgotten what we did, so we're all set.
I totally forgot. I'm guilty.
I didn't forget.
I didn't neither.
Because you have notes in your organize. Peter?
I just want to say, I don't know if I mentioned this earlier, but I really wanted input from the ACLU. So, before I sent anything to you guys, I called the council, the Massachusetts Council, who was the head lawyer that prepared that letter last summer. And I just told her that I was working on it, I was taking the approach that I took, and that we would welcome their input, and that we were gonna send them the letter with the draft. And then it took a couple of weeks longer than I expected to get the letter to them, but they should have it by now, and I would, perhaps, I don't know if it's better for Beth to make a call, or for me to make a call, but since I've spoken to her, I'll volunteer to do that if you want me to, just to follow up and encourage her to get us prompt feedback on it. I think at the last meeting, I think our theory was, let's have two rounds of input, one from the people who are likely to have something detailed to say, i.e. our town council and ACLU, and then do our formal public comment, sort of either more or less concurrently or thereafter. But I think now that the several weeks have slipped by, I think we have to do it all at once. So, I'm glad we're gonna do a public hearing. I think we need to fix that five-foot thing. I think we need to say that any sign needs to be just on the owner's side of any sidewalk or curb, and I think that'll do it. And I don't know if there are any other changes that we need to make. There certainly are people, including one of the justices of the Supreme Court, who think that the relevant Supreme Court case could be read the way Matt suggested, which is, you know, you can't do anything with political signs, because there could always be some sort of plaintiff in a peculiar situation who could say that you're discriminating against them in a way that could produce a failure of equal protection. I think that's possible, but I took, as I told you last time, I took a lot of courage from the fact that Justice Alito gave a long list of the things that he thinks towns can still do that are constitutional. And I just don't know how the can't-regulate crowd handles Justice Alito's opinion. So, I think it's, it's a matter of gray, I think, in constitutional law, there's no certainty here. But I think that the what I want to do is to impose a little bit of regulation on it, so that it doesn't go wild. And I think that my reading of the case law and the majority of the Supreme Court says that we can do that. But we may, you know, we may get challenged. I hope we don't, and I hope we can get a compromise with the ACLU so that they don't feel the desire to challenge us.
Okay, Matt, you're next.
Yeah, I kind of agree with Peter, though, just to move forward, and at our public hearing, we can change the curb issue that we discussed, and just move forward and get it done.
I actually don't have it in front of me. Where did we leave that?
I forget, my memory's...
Our final? What's the latest?
We went forward with the draft that I sent you, which had the five-foot thing in it, and I think we, rather than try to fix it that night, I think we just decided that we needed to get it in the paper.
Okay.
Is that right, Beth? Yeah.
That's all I remember, now that you say it.
Five feet and not in between the sidewalk or curb, right?
I think the way, I think we came to a consensus at that meeting, which was that five feet is out, don't mention five feet. And just require that the signs be placed outside the curb line or the sidewalk, if there is one.
Okay.
On the house side.
On the house side, well, if there's a house.
Or owner's side.
Yeah, so the owner's side of the curb or any sidewalk. It's pretty simple, really. If you take the five foot out, it gets even simpler than your first draft.
Peg?
Yes, could we have, thank you. Could we have Beth call the ACLU and just tell them that we're starting a public hearing, and let them know we'd really like to have her do it, so we could, if possible, for the public hearing, have their thoughts.
I think we just discussed that Peter has already been corresponding with them, so he will continue corresponding with them?
Well, this was the first that I had heard that Peter was corresponding with them, so I guess I just want to make sure this followed up with...
Well, we got both of them, we got both of them talking to them, so hopefully they will respond.
Okay.
I have no objection if Beth wants to call them, it's just I already spoke with the woman and had a conversation with her, but if Beth, if you don't do it, that's fine.
Oh, I don't, Peter, I don't, I don't mind that, it's just that I didn't realize you had called them, so I was like, you know, I just want to know what goes on, that's all.
Well, I just thought, I just thought if we could establish a friendly communication at the outset, the chances of...
Yeah, I agree.
...postulation would be reduced.
No, I have no problem with that. I have no problem with whoever does it, as long as someone does it. And the rest of us know about it.
Could you send a copy of the letter around, Beth, to the board members? So that's in two weeks, right? That hearing is in two weeks? Okay.
It is. So you'll continue corresponding with them and any...
I'll call her, I've forgotten her name, but I can get it from my files.
All right.
She was quite, she was quite friendly. She didn't, she didn't want to bring a lawsuit, she had to either, so.
Always good. And, yeah, I think that's gonna be the, the issue is that the five feet and the sidewalk. I don't see how they would have an issue with public land, like the park, stuff like that, or schools.
No, I think the issue, if there's any issue, it'll be that we are somehow creating First Amendment signs in a way that would be more liberating if it wasn't treated as a business sign. If they were that they were treating the First Amendment expression worse than the business expression. That was what the major case was about. And if, I think we avoid that by saying, you can do anything in your First Amendment signs that you could do with a business sign, and you can also have these yard sign things. So I don't think we'll run into any trouble, but who knows?
Yeah. Peg?
No, I was just gonna say, I thought you did a great job, Peter, trying to get this going for us.
Thank you.
In fact, I was impressed with Justice Alito's reading of this, because I usually do not agree with him. I know he has since passed, he's gone. But on many other issues, I have not agreed with him at all politically, but I thought this one was quite interesting. I liked what he had to say about the signs, so.
Great.
Justice Alito's still alive, isn't he?
He's, yeah, he's very, he's quite alive and kicking.
I think you're thinking of Scalia.
I'm thinking of Scalia, yes, you're right, sorry.
I think you disagree with Alito, too, Peg.
I disagree with him vehemently.
Not as much as Scalia, but still disagree.
But I still disagree with him. Oh, boy, you got that right, Peter. Oh, well. Healthy disagreement is good.
It's difficult these days.
It is.
Anything else, folks?
Oh, I'm sorry. I want to raise my hand.
Go ahead, now, we can, as long as we're not walking over each other, you know?
Okay, all right. I know, it's hard, and you've done a good job trying to control this motley crew, so. Oh, that's us, or me anyways. Yes, at the last meeting, I was thrilled that Mr. Cohen came, and that David asked him to report every now and then, and he made two things that I thought were interesting. And I'm sure everybody, or many people, read The Eagle, and the development in Lenox that they're putting forth. There was a line in it, and it said that they were going to try to give the Lenox residents a little bit of priority. And Mr. Cohen, Jeff, mentioned that at the meeting, and I was wondering, I don't know if somehow we could pursue that in some manner. I thought that was a very interesting comment that he had made. And oh, he said to call the new leader of Berkshire Housing. I think her first name is Arlene, I forget what it is. But maybe, maybe not call, but maybe we could ask these selectmen to, or we could coa a letter together, asking that, that that could at least be mentioned. I don't know, but he mentioned it at the meeting. And then he also mentioned, too, maybe it wouldn't hurt to write to Mr., I can't think of his name now, Rosinsky or something, I think he's in charge, he's got something to do with finance in the state. And I was just wondering if we wanted to pursue this in any way, because I think we're all trying to get this moving. So, those are just a couple of thoughts that I thought of afterwards, after the meeting.
Peter?
I agree with Pega, to the extent that any lobbying... I agree with Pega to the extent that any lobbying we might do with state officials. Could be beneficial in speeding this along a little bit. I think we should consider doing it. I didn't get to, I didn't get the feeling that he was actually asking for that, though. I think he was sort of. Suggesting that he was waiting for this guy and that guy, and uh. I, I didn't. I, I think before we contact anybody and say, push it along, fella. Um, I think maybe we should check in with Cohen again and see what he thinks.
Okay, maybe Beth could just check in with him if that's acceptable to everybody and see what he thinks, or.
The question would be. Is there anybody that? The town of Lee should be contacting at the state level. In order to. Facilitate more prompt processing. Is that right, babe? Is that about right?
I would love it. I would love that. Yes.
That sounds right.
And then new person from Berkshire Housing, I think somebody. I don't know, but she is new, she's not. I think she's from the Boston area, so she may also have some interesting ideas um. About Lee Residence um priority. I don't know, you know, I don't know if you can do that. I know that in Boston. Different parts of Boston, they do it differently than we do up here. Um, so who knows? I mean, it would be wonderful. If somehow Lee Residence could um. Be there. Um, not, I, I don't, you can't do it totally, but. It would be nice. So those are.
I, I'm curious if, if you live in Lee, you have an apartment or whatever in Lee already. So you would give that person priority into moving into this, these apartments?
No, I don't know if it's really that, Buck. I'm just wondering if um, sometimes like, I mean, I have heard. Some people say. Well, how did so and so? No, I don't know. It's like a rumor type thing, but yeah, it does occur. Some people have asked the question, well, how did so and so get in? This particular building or what have you, and um. You know, I've had my list, I have, I've had my name on the list for three years. I mean, not me personally, but other people have said this. I don't know how they do it. I mean, there's probably a certain procedure. I guess it's just. Um. He mentioned it at the meeting, and I thought it was interesting. He, he mentioned.
Heard it, yeah.
Yeah, and I just thought it was a very interesting thing, and then the next day I picked up the paper. And read about the Lenox um. Development up near Brushwood Farms, and that was mentioned in that development. That's a private development, I believe. I'm not quite sure. I'm, no, that was affordable housing, or. Anyways, it's just a thought, it's just a thought. I mean, we are the Lee Planning Board, and we represent the people in the town of Lee, and. Um. It's a thought, that's all.
I, I think it sounds good for a newspaper article. Tell you the truth.
Well, it does, but I don't know how, you know, they would feel. I don't know.
No.
Yeah.
Matt?
Thank you. I was just uh. I was gonna move on if you guys are.
Sure.
Okay with that, but uh, I think it's Eileen Pelletier who took over for Berkshire Housing.
Oh, thank you. Thank you, ma'am.
Um, but I was gonna move on to uh the Airbnb bylaw that we have talked about. And um. Kind of revisit a little bit uh to see if we want to go further on that for um. You know, I've been reading the Great Barrington.
Hmm.
Uh, debates, which has been very uh. Interesting. Um, it's kind of got me. All over the place um. Where I don't even know if it's worth it to even tackle it.
I, well, I've, I tell you, man, I have thrown down some notes on it from what we've discussed here, and what. I've noticed in forums uh where the problem lies, and uh. Were. Um, I think in a nutshell, the, the big issues. Are um. People that aren't local owning the properties, so Stockbridge put in their. Their bylaw that the owner or property manager has to be within twenty minutes. From the property. And that, that passed through the AG. Um, I'd like to go one step further on that and take out property manager part. And if that sounds doable, and also, I think off-street parking. Um. Needs to be there uh, some sort of registration. For the Airbnbs with a, a violation schedule and a fine schedule. And a revoke, and a way to revoke their um right to operate. If there's a problem. Um, the Great Barrington one has gotten very complicated because they're trying to appease everybody. And I, I don't know if you can with this.
The one thing I took away from the articles, uh, well, a couple of things, is that they're. Almost like we need to identify what our goal is by doing the bylaw. Um, I think one of the members wants to help local. People be able to afford homes, and they think that the Airbnbs are causing. That not to. To hamper that issue, and I don't know if that's true or not, to be honest with you. I don't know, we don't have any facts that say. Airbnb investors are causing these high prices, um, although, yeah, go ahead.
I'm sorry, no, you, you, um, there's, there's two different things. There's, there's people that are homeowner. And property, you know, local owner, and then there's outside investors. And yeah, I think in some areas of the country, the outside investors have gobbled up so much of the properties. That there's a problem. But I, I just, I'm not seeing it here.
Yeah, a- as I mentioned, I, I do get caught, I mean, every week. Every buyer is saying they want to Airbnb it, so I see the, the, on the street. On the street, and it is a lot. I mean, a lot of buyers, so there is that, but. I don't know if that's the reason. I still don't know if that's the reason why home prices are. Uh, difficult for local people to purchase. The other thing I took away from it is. It was a good point in the article. I think it was a letter, it was the edit, editorial in The Eagle. Uh, and how they mentioned, you know, this is a commercial use. And so then I.
He's nodding his head, here we go.
Well, I mean, I, I'm just.
What do we have, Gordon? What, what's happening there?
I, I think this is um, I think this is the, the things that I'm wrestling with where, what's our goal, because. It, it is technically a commercial use in a residential's area in a lot of, a lot of areas, or if, if not all of them, so. What do we, how do we regulate that? And then, do we do any more? Um, to, if we think that it is hurting local people from, from affording. Homes here, so, and. So anyways, those are the things that I'm wrestling with, but go ahead.
At Berkshire Regional, the, there has been a, a few discussions on this, and um, you know, everybody. I don't know if they have any. Real data, um, but what they're. Everybody says, well, there's no uh real estate available because of this. But I think if you went through and did a survey, you'd find that if the people that are doing. Short-term rental. They would not, they would not opt to do long-term. If given the option. So, so there, it's not like you're, it's not like you're taking a, a rental off the market, you're. You know, short-term, if they don't have that option, they'd probably do nothing with the property.
So then that means that property would be available for.
No, it means, it means they would just.
Have it as a second home?
Yeah.
And still buy it, because I mean, I.
Buy it.
Because I mean, a lot of people that I meet with are saying. We want a second home to come to uh, you know, six, seven weekends a year, but we want it, want the availability to Airbnb it. Yeah. Yeah. I know Gordon, Gordon was uh next, so go ahead, Gordon.
He, he's chomping.
No, I just, I don't want to talk over anybody. I was just, wait, my turn. Um, I, I thought that we sent our, I thought I forwarded, I don't think you guys sent it to me, uh. The Supreme Court Judicial Court of Massachusetts determination. About um, short-term rentals. And the statement that it is, it, it should not be treated the same as a by right single family. Under zoning. It supported a building official's determination that it was a different type of use, not allowed in that zone. So the issue is, uh, you said, how do you control it? There, I think there's a couple of ways. My understanding is Great Barrington. Wants to put it as part of their corporate bylaw, not a zoning bylaw. That, that changes the terms and the way it would be enforced. Other communities are putting in their zoning bylaw to make it be um, a special permit issue if they want to do it, if it's. Owner occupied or, or non-primearily owner occupied. There's, there's a lot of language out there, so. I don't have any answers, but I'm telling you, it's very complicated. I'm willing to share the information I have. The um, there are attempts to. Underscore the, the differences between a long-term, just single-use, single-family home. And the life safety issues involved in short-term rentals where they're non-primearily owner occupied. With the absentee owners. Um, where nobody's looking after certain life safety issues, making sure they're still in play between. You know, one renter and another renter. Somebody take all the batteries out, they take the smoke detectors down, you know, that kind of stuff. So that's, that will be addressed more than likely before the end of the year, or by the end of the year, as a building code issue, but. Zoning wise. If I didn't send that Supreme Judicial Court. Um, finding to all of you, I think I'll get it to Beth and let her forward it again, if I didn't do that.
I didn't get it.
Oh, you know why? Because I sent, I sent it to all the local building officials to deal with their zoning people with, rather than me get it directly to you. I thought BJ maybe would send it to you. So I'll send that off to Beth, and then she can distribute it appropriately. Um, and it, it makes a very interesting read, and it may influence a little bit of. Like Matt said, you need an objective, you know, you need a reason for doing this, and might help you come up with that, but that, that's all. I, I, I'm not picking sides or whatever. I'm just saying, I have info, I'll get it to you. Thank you.
Thank you, Gordon. Peg?
No, I was just gonna ask him if he would send it off to us. So, yes, I would love it, and uh. I've been watching the um. Meeting in Great Barrington as well, and Matt is right, that the objective and the terms that are used. Are very confusing. Um, sometimes to the general public, and they're interchanged, and. I thought the exchanges and some of the comments were very good. Um. And I did read, as Matt noted too, the Eagle article on zoning, and I thought that was interesting as well, because uh. It is a, it's a difficult issue. It's not, I don't think, an easy issue, and. It does require, I think, a certain amount of thought from all of us um, when we're doing this, and. Information given to us so we can make. Good decisions on, on this, because it, it's very important to people. Um. Some people do supplement, you know, their housing um by renting a room during the season. And. It helps them financially too, and that's primary occupied, I realize that. Um, so, thank you.
Beyond the finance, we find it very satisfying also. It, it's very interesting, very satisfying. The, the little bit we do. Um, to see families come to the Berkshires, enjoy the Berkshires. Um, we have a guestbook, and they're constantly. We see their favorite restaurants. It's kind of interesting there to see what they like in our town and, and everything. Um, it, it's a lot of fun. It, it's enjoyable. So, Peter?
Um, I don't know if we're ready to move on, but I would like if we adjourn, what?
I, I.
Okay, no, that's fine. I don't. I was just gonna say, on Houstonic Street years ago, everybody rented during the summer. It was um. And one year we had a little boy um. From Brazil that played soccer, and all the children are so involved with. Um, him. It can be a very, very nice experience. I agree, Buck. It's not. I think it is, though, a complicated issue. Thank you, and I.
I will say that the horror stories. The horror stories you hear are usually um.
Well, yeah. I know.
But we do have to. Do something.
Right.
Peter, you got your last, our last motion?
Well, no, I wanted to, there's another, something else we need to discuss, in my opinion. I hope we can.
Okay.
And that is the upcoming town meeting on our bylaw.
Oh, yeah.
Um, I think we need to plan a presentation to the, to the reps. And um, I, I met with the selectmen, well, I didn't meet with them, I, I attended their meeting last week where they put the notice out. I, um, Chris had called me with a question about something I had in the, in the draft that I. Somehow we got tangled up between the site plan and the special permit, this business. And it, it went to the selectman first time with special permit, and he called me to say. Wasn't that supposed to be site planned? I said, oh, yeah. So somehow, I, I think I'm at fault for this. I think I. I moved over to Windows eleven, and in Windows eleven. Bill Gates is always trying to push your files into his mothership, you know, they call it OneDrive. And so I've got apparently different files with the same name in different places, that say different things. Anyway, I'm still trying to sort it out, so. But I think I'm as responsible for it. We straightened it out. And I went to the meeting and talked to them about the, the proposals, and they're, they were quite helpful, and they had a few questions. That I tried to answer. Um, but I, I think um, having been through that, and, and just generally. I think we should have a presentation prepared for the reps to explain. Propose and why. Mr. Chairman, I don't know if you have any thoughts on this. If you don't, I'll, I'll make an offer, but I'd be glad to hear you first.
Oh, I mean, I'll be there anyway. As a rep, um, uh, but I really would like um. To probably have you there.
Sure.
To defer to if we can.
Yeah.
Your, your expertise within these bylaws, if anyone else would like to come and um, put their. Added thoughts into it too, when we have questions, because. There'll be questions, and um, I'll, I'll pretty much guarantee to get flustered on it, so.
I, I also want to admit that I told the selectmen that um, when we got to the question of the Code 360 stuff. That I was thinking that maybe Matt would be the one to answer those questions.
Perfect. He, he, he was instrumental in that. I, I think that'd be great. You, you up for that, Matt, that night?
You're, you're muted.
You're muted.
Sorry, thanks. I'll be there, no problem. Okay.
And do you think we should have, you know, just like a five-minute presentation at the beginning, Buck, about the. The bylaw changes, the animals, and the site plan and special permits, and.
I think as the warrants come up, we deal with them um individually, would be easier for the people.
Peter, I remember, Peter, I remember when I was chairman and we had. A, a few bylaws that we were trying to get to tell me, and of course, we got delayed with the pandemic and everything. Well, you did up some summaries, just a short paragraph of each, a summary of what, why we did it for each um.
Yep.
Chapter, and I think that's perfect. So then, you, or Buck, or I, we can switch, whatever you guys want, whatever Buck wants. We can um alternate and maybe do a preview of this, read the summary. Of what, what our goal was, and then, and then take questions. Uh.
Perfect.
All right. Why don't I send that summary around? I'll look at it, make sure it's up to date, and. Send it around, and Buck, would you want to, would you want to read that to people, or do you want me to read it?
If, well, like, like you said, I think uh Code 360 can be presented by Matt. He was pretty instrumental in that. Um. Myself, the, the uh, you know, the animal one, the uh. I think the non-conforming, and um. The site plan, you know, that's, that was a lot of you there, Peter, if uh we want to break it up like that. Yeah.
Yeah, I think the um. The first batch we did. We only had um. I think three or four, I think site, I think site. We only had um, I think three or four, I think site, I think site plan was one of them. Uh, special permit, nonconforming. Um, Peter, you did send me a, a summaries for those, but the newer bylaws. Obviously, we haven't got to a town meeting yet, so the, the summer, there's no summaries on those.
Okay, well, I'll, I'll draft up a summary. And could I just suggest, you know, maybe what we could do, Buck, is you could be. Since you're a rep, it'll be easy for you. You can always speak. I can't, I'm not a rep. So when we get to, you know, Article one. You can yield to, you know, me and then in Article two, you can yield to Matt and in Article three, you can answer yourself. Read the thing yourself and go through it that way and just have. Different people, you know, being prepared to just say a few words about each article.
I think that'd be great, yeah. We'll do that.
And then, and then say that, you know, since I'm answering. You know, Articles eight and nine, I will be al- available to answer questions when the presentation's finished. That kind of thing. That work?
I mean, we can team, I mean, we can, you know. If there's questions that need to be answered, we can. Either as a team to, to add our two cents in, if you will. But um. I, I wanted to mention something about the Airbnbs. I didn't want to move on. I wanted to, I wanted to mention uh, something about that. Couple of things, do we know how many Airbnbs we have now in Lee? Buck, do you know that? Without looking.
A quick search, you could find that out.
That's what I thought. I just wasn't sure.
There's probably, I, I think there's probably a dozen, maybe fifteen.
And then I'm assuming the ones that are already in existence, no matter what we do for bylaw, they'd be grandfathered in.
I don't think so.
No?
I don't think so, no.
Okay.
No, because they would probably be at that instant, but as soon as you turn over a new. Renter, then I think you're, you're changing things. So um, and most communities, what I've seen is when they do change their bylaw, people are, are done. They're, they're out.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
And then I was thinking, um, you know, maybe what we should do as a board, just a suggestion, I mean, I'll, I'll, I'll go along with that, whatever the board. Feels, but maybe we should set down some. Uh, goals that we want to achieve with the um, Airbnb, you know, what are, what are objectives, obje- objectives are, excuse me. So that we can try to formulate it towards uh, towards those. I still don't know what our goals are. I know, I know zoning, commercial, off street parking. Um, as you said, Buck, fines.
Keep it.
Yeah.
Keep it locally owned.
Not, well, I don't even know. I, I need some, I need like some information that tells me. I don't know, it's hard to judge, like uh, one thing I, another thing I took out of the article was, why are we treating? Second homeowners different. You know, uh, in that regard, I, you know, I, I'm, I'm very mixed on it. I'm, uh, we should do something. I just don't know how far it should go.
Okay.
Um. And then do we, do we, do we tax them? Do we, do we tax them a little bit and to the town?
It is already taxed.
The town gets.
Extra? You mean extra?
Yeah, I did, yeah.
They already pay, it's our, you're already, everyone already pays the uh, room tax.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
So. Um, that's it. Now, now I'm done on the Airbnb.
Okay. Gordon?
I know, why don't you go to uh, uh, Dave Forrest, he's a member, full member and let, he had.
All right. All right, Dave.
I wouldn't let you go in front of me, Gordon. What the heck?
Oh, no, no, please, you go.
You've been patient, man. I was looking at the, the, the town meeting articles today. There's a lot on the warrant. Uh, and not knowing how everything's going to be accepted at this town meeting. I would think we should keep our input to a bare minimum. Cause you could open up a business uh, when you least expect it.
Give them minimal information?
That's correct. I mean, if there's a questions, a question asked, yes, we'll, we'll answer. But I would keep our comments to a minimum to lead into them. Um, cause as I say, it, it, we're, we're not up till later on in the meeting. Uh, and we can kind of feel the crowd out before that happens, but uh, it could be good and it could be a mess.
I know where my odds are running. Gordon?
What it is.
Sure, y- you done, Dave?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Um, yeah, it, running toward what Dave was just talking about. I know you're talking about presentations and all that. What you may find helpful when it's such a long meeting like this. Is if you're gonna write up a paragraph to read, just write up all your paragraphs and have them as a handout. To all the representatives, so you don't have to present yourself and take up that time. Cause Dave's right. I've been at many town meetings where toward the end, people just want to get the heck out of there. And they don't really want to listen or they get cranky and then they want to fight. So the other option is you can give that as a handout, but in the meantime, talk to the people at the. Uh, the Board of Selectmen and the people who run the meeting, because they can also. Uh, drop a screen down and have your summary for each article up while the article is being discussed, so you don't have to. I hate to go to a meeting and have somebody read me something when I already have it in my hand and I can read it myself. So it could be that during the discussions with a summary up on a screen behind everybody. Behind the Board of Selectmen on stage, that, that might save a lot of discussion and questions, you know, do they really understand it? What's the summary? And I, I think in that way, I agree with Dave that keep it short. The, you know, keep it simple, stupid principles, you know? Um, and don't get too in-depth, cause people, a lot of people don't want the in-depthness of it. They just want to know generally, what is it for? Why are we doing it? And if the planning board thinks it's a good idea unanimously, then they're gonna go. That's all.
So um. Would, would that sound good to everyone? Um, we draw, uh, Peter writes up some summaries and we actually put those in with the. The uh, packets of the.
Well, the packets are already out, but we could hand them out at the meeting.
They will, right, right. They'll get their um, voting sheet. Uh, I free, I didn't see who was first, Matt, or Peg. Let's go to Peg.
No, that's all right. You can go, Matt.
Uh, thanks, Beck. Um, I was just thinking, maybe instead of a summary. They, they were very short, but I agree with Gordon and, and, and you and Dave. Um, maybe just. One paragraph, a short statement saying, all these bylaws proposed tonight. You know, a lot of them are housekeeping. A lot of them are like the code three sixty. There's just so many little housekeeping, keeping items. Um, but maybe we should just explain that. Uh, these changes have been long in the works to upgrade our bylaws uh, for practical use and that's it. You know, uh, that's the general goal of all our bylaw changes. Uh. Just keep one, one statement, not, not a.
For all of them?
For all of them, cause that's our, that's really our, our goal on all of them is just. I mean, the site plan and special permit, although they're large items. We really just upgraded them to for um, to be in conjunction with how we use, how we operate now. We kind of were operating outside the site plan and special permit to accommodate applicants to help them. And now we're just catching the bylaw up to that. So I mean, really, it's not. Anything major, I don't think. But I know other people might think, uh, but maybe just one short summary and that's it. You can read that. That's not gonna take, that'll take thirty seconds. Done. And then we don't have to worry about handing them out in the packets now, cause we've already got the packets out.
And, and just let the questions, let the warrants go and um, without presenting?
Yeah, just let them go and let the questions come and we'll answer them the best we can. I mean, I can't remember the code three sixties, uh. Some of those questions were a little more involved, but I can't remember why we did them. You know, and, and I mean, most of them are just housekeeping items, little, little items that were done in the. Editorial review by, by the company, gen- uh, general code, so. I don't think people are really gonna have many issues with general code, once they start looking at each item.
What, um, we'll go to Peg and then I'll come back around to this, okay?
Okay.
Hey?
I, thank you, um, Mr. Chair. I agree. I think it should be very simple. Um, and. Just try to be as succinct as possible. Um, I'm not saying don't have a one line summary or something, but. What we, and I would like also it to be included. And I do think you did the right thing on this, Buck, by continuing the meetings or all of us for. I would like to know how many times we continued these bylaw discussions. Maybe Beth could tell us. Um, it has been out there for how many months? I mean, these bylaws, we've been working on and having meetings and people, I think it's great that some people did come. Um. But now I think the meeting is occur, going to occur and I like keeping it simple. And if there are questions, I'm sure we'd be able to answer them. I don't think there would be a problem. Thank you.
Okay, so um, what do you guys think? Do we, um, when our group of warrants come up, we just start with the first one and? Uh. Just say that they've been worked on for many years and let them fly?
Well, I, I really think, Buck, that if we just tell them that we haven't deleted anything in zoning. We're cleaning up verbiage, uh, in some places where we're, the same statement is made two or three times. Now it's only gonna be one. Uh, and I, I, I think I would let them, you know, if every, if these people haven't done their homework already, saying this is gonna be. Long and painful.
I mean, that, that's true for code three sixty, but the other ones, we, we are changing things.
Well, the code three sixty, when we come to that, that, that's the biggest animal right there.
It is.
Biggest, so, biggest, but a lot of little items.
Biggest by the age count certainly, but not like, not by change.
That's right.
No.
But we do have new bylaws, the animal bylaw, we do have new bylaws that, that we are adding, so.
I mean, and the whole site plan is, is changed and special permit. Peter?
I pulled up my um, my summary from last September. Can I show it on the screen just to see if people think it's too long?
Sure.
Can you see it? Okay. So this is something I prepared last September and I think I sent to you. And it's four pages, so um, it's not, it doesn't satisfy the keep it simple, stupid test. Um, it's too long for that, but I don't think it's, I don't think it's wordy or windy, you know? Um. Do you want to make a decision now or do you want me to send it to you and you can review it and make changes and? I guess what I would suggest at this point is unless people have objections, we could just print this up and hand it out at the meeting.
Oh, good.
And I'll send it, I'll send it to you to make sure that you agree with the content. And then we'll present it as the consensus recommendation of the board if everybody agrees. Is that all right?
I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm fine if you've done the work, Peter, and I'd hate to just throw it away. But I think this goes against our simple, as you stated, it goes against our simple.
Okay.
So I, I'm fine, print it out, hand it out to people, let it go. Um, I'm fine with that.
I don't care, really. I'm not expert at how to get things through the reps in Lee, so you guys know more about that than I do.
No, I'm, I'm fine. It's just that we got the logistics, we got to print them all out and make sure they're with the packets. A lot of reps are going to, they already have their packets.
Yeah, but they'll, they, they have to sign in.
They have to sign in, so they'll have to get.
Yeah, you have to sign in, you have to get your, your voting sheet and a lot of times there's a supplemental sitting right there and this could be a supplemental. Did that? Sound good, Gordon? I mean, how many times you've been through this?
Yeah, actually, I've been there many times and this kind of a document that Peter's showing now actually. Isn't that long. It's in it, broken down by each individual uh, section, and I think it could be very helpful. And it at least let the representatives know that it's well thought out. Um, and I think that it wouldn't hurt to have this as a handout. Again, you would have them up at the front table where you get your voting sheet. People have a little bit of time to quickly look it over, but as each, each section is presented, they can look at the summary themselves. I don't think we should take the time to stand up in front and do all this. Or ask them to put the summary up on a screen as well as having the handout. Um, so that the citizens who are not, who may have an interest but don't have the handout would also be able to follow along. I think that's important. Keep the citizens involved by having the, the PowerPoint projector. But no, I think that's uh, it's a great way to go about it. And I would suggest you print them out and have them available, but. I wouldn't try and, you know, mail them out or put them part, you know, it's beyond, that ship sailed.
That's all. The other thing is when, when Peter responds to a question or Buck responds or I, we can reference the summary.
So, Peter, could you um, format these and, and have them in order that they're on the warrant? Cause they, they jumbled our warrant around a little bit.
Oh, um, you want me, you want me to make sure that the order presented in this document is the same as, as is in the warrant? Okay, okay.
That'll be less confusing.
I'll do that tomorrow and then send it out. Okay.
Great, and then we'll, we'll have um. Our, our helpful assistant Beth could make up a bunch of copies and have them at town meeting.
I'm actually sitting at the table that hands out the sheets, so I'll be there to hand them out. Oh, and the first hearing was the twenty seventh of September.
Hmm, wow.
Yeah, months.
Wow, that's months. Right.
That, Peg, I'll, I'll warn you, that's, and everybody, that's probably. When I'll fill out my sheet and walk out when somebody says that they didn't have enough time for input on this. So, I'm, I'm, I, I don't want to get. Worked up yet, but I, I have a feeling I know where this night's gonna go.
Uh, can I say, Buck, I don't, I'm gonna hope for good things.
I am.
I, I'm gonna hope we get a few questions and that.
Yeah.
It'll go well.
It been, and remember, if, if these get voted, no, they're, they're put away for two years.
I can't, I don't, I don't, I feel that people, I don't, I don't know, I. I feel they could maybe strike out something that really irritated them. But to vote them all down, I just can't believe that would happen, but I'm naive, so. I mean, I'm gonna hope they all go through and I'm gonna hopefully do get a couple of questions, not too long and involved, but. I can't believe that all this would go down, but I, I tend to hope when I. Don't always get what I hope for, so I'm gonna hope it goes well.
What would be the scenario in which they all go down? What would be, what would be, what would be the scenario in which they get, the whole package gets defeated?
There's, there's a movement around town, Peter, that um, until we get open town meeting. To vote no on everything.
I'm gonna hope that doesn't happen.
I don't think it's large, but um.
Okay.
Yeah.
But I think that's very unwise.
I do too.
Yeah.
This uh, representative form of town meeting has worked. Um, I think pretty well for the town of Lee for many years. I mean, Gordon, you've watched it over the years. And. I don't know. I, frustrates me, I see other towns and, and I see them load up a meeting for a special interest project. And it's just sad, you know?
I uh, the idea that we can't do anything until we change X. Is the democratic equivalent of holding your breath until you turn blue, I guess, right?
Mm-hmm. Yeah. Okay, so the plan will be, we'll um, have a handout for the, on the table and we'll also try to get. The digital copy up on the screen, Beth. I think they'll have a screen going. Um, we'll do a short presentation when our list of articles come up and just reference the uh. The handout and, and let it go from there.
I, I don't think we're doing any presentation, are we? We're just handing them.
Do nothing? Okay.
We're just handing them this.
Just be there for questions.
We'll just be there for questions and then we can reference the summary, but the summary will be in everybody, all the reps' hands.
Okay. Sound like a plan, folks? Peg? Sound like a plan, folks? Peg?
Sounds good to me.
Okay.
And thank you, Buck. I know it's been tough here.
Yeah. Hey, he had it easy. Okay. He's got Beth. Okay. I had two years with nobody. Okay?
He, he did. I gotta say, he's right.
Well, I had a year with no one.
He's had a cakewalk, okay?
But being chair, chair is a lot of responsibility. It's not easy.
It's, it's, uh, Beth makes it easy. I'll tell you. Yes, Matt did have, you guys working without a, a land use assistant was difficult. But I'm not sure the one that we had prior made it easier either. So.
That was a challenge.
Those kinds of things though, really, we, we don't want to be personal though.
No, no, but it was, it was, it was tough back then. I, I remember the arguments over the meeting, the minutes. And, um, I'm glad that's behind us. So. All right, folks. Anything else?
Move to adjourn?
Don't move.
I can.
All right. We'll see you at town meeting.
Great. Thanks. Thanks, everybody.